Welcome in. Thank you for coming to the Wednesday, January 16th, meeting of the East Hampton City Council. Can I have a roll call, please?
Justin Cobb.
President.
Donald Psychowski.
Yeah.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy. Chester Ogilvets.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
Okay, actually, before we continue with anything else, what I'd like to do is I have been absent due to medical leave for quite a while here, and I wanted to extend a hearty thank you to all the cards and the kind words from my fellow councilors and citizens of East Hampton, and especially a big thank you to John McCoy and Salem Derby for stepping up and filling in while I was out. That said, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Second.
We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Any further discussion on these minutes? Okay, that said, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? I will abstain. With that said, what I'd like to do is go into public speak time. This is actually for residents who would like to come forward and address the council on issues that are not in the public hearing section. If there are any one present who would like to do so, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay?
Hi, Melissa Pike, actually, Eight Pine Metal Drive, Southampton. I'm here just for a couple of reminders for the Greater East Hampton-St. Patrick State Committee. The first, most important one is, I need the application for city council. It was due on Sunday. I don't know who...
It's already been sent.
They don't have it. So, if you have a copy, or if somebody could refill it out.
It was sent, like, a month ago.
Yeah, I've heard that from a few folks, so I just want to get a reminder. So if somebody could refill it out and get it to me, I meet with the Holyoke folks every Sunday.
We'll ask...
You're on the list, you're set. I just need the lineup for the media to make sure you're all recognized, whoever's going to be there. And I hope you're all going to be there. Then, just a couple of small announcements. We are giving out two $1,000 scholarships this year to students that are seniors going on to secondary education from East Hampton, Southampton, or West Hampton. So if anybody can pass that along, I have applications. Also, the awards have been given out to East Hampton. Billy Sullivan, a longtime volunteer and a lot of things for East Hampton, has been awarded our Marshall. Nancy Luck from Southampton is our Gallagher Award winner, and Steve Zavisa is our Shamrock winner. The awards will be given at our annual dinner on the 23rd of Saturday, the 23rd of February, and we'd love to have you join us. And the chamber asked me to also remind you that the luncheon this year has been moved to Southampton Country Club on March 8th, lunchtime, and we will be honored by Congressman Richard Neal for our guest speaker. So, if somebody could just get me that information by email or whatever, I'll get it turned in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Is there another member of the public who'd like to address the council on any issue other than what's on the public hearing agenda? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. There's, we have no communications from elected officials or correspondents. Mayor's communication. Since the mayor could not attend tonight, does the finance director want to add anything? Okay, what we do have is one item that does need action. I'll turn that over to Counselor Derby to handle it.
So it is that time of year again, and we have a declaration of snow emergency, so I'd like to read this in the form of a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 31D, the East Hampton City Council, in conjunction with the approval of the mayor, hereby authorizes the emergency expenditure of funds for the continued removal of ice and snow in the city of East Hampton during fiscal year 2013, and further, that a majority of the finance subcommittee be authorized to approve snow emergency warrants as necessary, date submitted to council January 16th, 2013.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion, further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or objections? None, motion passes. The other three items we have are correspondence from the mayor. They actually, the first one is the production levels at the Oliver Street Solar Facility. It indicates that we are on track with what was expected, very close to it, so we're actually doing a pretty good job of saving money there. Included, because it's a charter requirement, is also the update on the capital improvement plan. And then, for our reading, to show how good we are doing tax-wise, is a report on property tax comparisons in the Pioneer Valley. I encourage the councilors to read that and take it from there. You have a few more minutes. I'd like to get into some of the reports of standing committees. Counselor Rist, could you take your rules?
Thank you, Mr. President. The rules committee met, and we did talk about our citizen request for the Mount Tom coal plant resolution. We got a lot of information, and there's some more information we need, and we will discuss that at our next meeting and finalize whether or not we want to do a resolution. We did discuss at length, and I gave the councilors a report on video recording of open meetings and a discussion of recording by all boards and committees. First, the Rule 11G, we added the word "open," and we corrected the word "taking" in the language of the rule. We voted three to zero to adopt the rule. Just to be clear, this rule only affects city councilors. It does not affect other boards and committees and the volunteers. Just as a side note, we are elected officials, and although we kind of volunteer, we are getting paid, and that's a big difference. One of the discussion notes, we talked about, as I said in my report, we set an example of transparency to all boards and committees. This rule would only affect council committees, would make access to the constituents more readily available, given important issues, and would make access to committee debates available to other councilors who were not able to attend. This was brought up at the meeting. I think Counselor McCoy actually brought it up in the debate for Chapter 32B, for instance. He was able to watch that. So the, before I go, and the second part of our discussion had to do with video recording by all boards and committees. We felt that we would not want to propose an ordinance or an administrative code change. The mayor has executive authority over the other boards and committees in town, and he has already sent a memo out regarding his wish that those boards and committees used the ECAT cameras when they are available. Should he wish to propose an ordinance to force that action, that's when the council would take it up, but this council, this rules committee does not feel it's necessary. In fact, we feel the volunteers on those committees need time to absorb the idea of them being recorded, and that was confirmed by the rules committee. We did discuss sending a memo from the council to all boards and committees, which I quote, "In the interest of transparency and providing access to all East Hampton residents, the council recommends that ECAT cameras be used whenever possible." This memo would be something we would, the president, I guess, would sign if the council should feel that would be appropriate to send to all the boards and committees. So it's a recommendation, not a, of course, not a rule. So the first thing I will do, since this is purely for the council, I will make a motion to adopt Rule 11G, Video Recording of Open Committee Meetings. That's a motion.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend and approve Rule 11G, Video Recording of Open Committee Meetings. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Counselor Psychowski? Yes, I've watched several of these meetings on TV. The sound is so terrible that you can't understand a lot of the things that people are saying. It seems like it's ridiculous for us to pass this, so at least they get the sound system straightened out, so when the people are at that table talking, you can understand what they're talking about.
Counselor Rist?
Counselor McCoy actually said that he had no problem listening to the meetings that he had to watch, and he watched quite a few of them, so I'm not sure what your problem was, but we also talked to him.
Have you watched any, Danny?
Yes, and if you, I talked to Cap...
Counselor Rist has the floor.
I talked to the ECAT people, and they said they had no complaints, so I don't know where that's coming from, but we did address the issue, Mr. President.
Okay, what I'd like to add is this, is that I was actually reluctant to take this route. I feel we have a rule, it's called the open meeting law. I'm also one of those believers, it's a philosophical belief, that whenever we create a rule or legislate in reaction to something, we have to tread very carefully, because that generally means we're going to do something really bad, because it isn't going to be thought out. That said, after the discussion and reading of this rule, I agreed to bring it forward to this. I did vote to do so, and I will be voting to approve this rule tonight, even though I was reluctant to begin with. Counselor Rist?
Just to reiterate the debate we had, Mr. President, the open meeting law, as I've stated prior to this, does not require any board or committee to video record using public access recording. So there is no current law that requires us to record. This rule would require it, it would mandate it for the council. So, I'm not sure how the current open meeting law would enforce it. It doesn't. If it did, I wouldn't, I would agree with you, we wouldn't need this, but it doesn't enforce the need to record.
Counselor Derby?
So, quick question. First, do we have an idea of what's going to be done with the video recordings, once they're, are they logged somewhere? Are they going to be put online? Are they going to be on...
As I understand it, they are, the chip that's in the camera, it's not connected, is pulled from the camera and brought to the studio to be mixed and then replayed. Once the recording is done, they are archived in the server. I don't know how long. I did not ask, in fact, that was brought up, it's something that I need to check on, how long they are archived, but they are.
Okay, second part of my question. If, let's say, I imagine it's the chair's responsibility to record. What if the chair forgets? Which is something that probably will happen.
If we forget to abide by a rule and someone brings it up, then we'll deal with it. I don't know how to...
I'm just curious if we have, if we have a route, a plan of action, if we...
Someone would complain. Obviously, that's how this all got started, so...
Okay, Counselor Hagan?
I'm not a member of the rules committee, but I did attend their meeting, and I thought it was a very thoughtful discussion. I've always been a big proponent of openness in government. I think it's very valuable. I think people that aren't able to attend meetings, especially senior citizens, or I know other council, you know, I've had subcommittee meetings when another subcommittee's meeting, and it's been valuable for myself to see what's going on at the other meeting, so I'm definitely a big proponent of this, especially because it involves elected officials. I think we all should not be afraid to have our comments recorded.
Counselor Psychowski?
I want to go on rugged. I'm not afraid to have my comments recorded, ever. But one thing, the sound system is lousy. I don't know if you people have had that thing on. The TV is lousy, and the thing of it is, I don't know how many people watch that channel. To me, the most important thing is to look out here at the audience tonight and to see everybody concerned citizens here. That's what we need at those meetings, not at TV. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Okay, any other further debate?
I just have another question.
Counselor?
We have several subcommittees that don't meet in actual rooms. They meet prior to the council meetings. Are they going to be forced a year from now, six months from now, or immediately to start recording their meetings also?
What do you mean, like, the appointments?
Property, I mean, there's a few that meet...
Counselor Rist, would you like to...
I believe we discussed that, and what we said to remind you, Counselor, was that if it says in the rule, if the, if the equipment is available and functioning properly, in other words, if it's not available or not turned on, then you are not violating the rule. In other words, if you have a meeting 15 minutes before this meeting, you don't have to go in and force them to turn it on. It's about the video recording in which you have to access and turn it on, which is only in three rooms. If none of those rooms are available and you're not in one, obviously, the recording isn't available, so you're not violating the rule either. That's my feeling on it.
Does that satisfy your question?
It does.
Okay, any further debate? Okay, that said, we'll take a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objection or abstention?
No.
We have one no. Any abstentions? None? Our motion passes. Thank you.
The second part of this was, and I wanted to hear from the council, was whether to recommend that other boards and committees, with the quotation I had, that the president would sign in a letter to all boards and committees, whether we wanted to do that or not. Again, it's a recommendation. It is also stating, we could also state in the letter that we do not recommend any ordinance or code change at this time. The committee discussed it, and that's what we ended up with, so... I don't know what the president wishes to do, whether we want to vote. It'd have to be in the form of a motion.
To vote on it?
Yeah. Whether we want to send this kind of a memo to all of the committees.
Well, we can ask for the consensus of the council if you want to decide whether we vote on this or not. Personally, I don't think it's necessary. We already indicated we're not going to do anything concerning the other boards and committees under the mayor. But it was brought up in the discussion, as Counselor Rist said. So, is there a consensus to actually create a vote on this, or just to let it rest?
Let it rest. If I might. Mr. President, then I would just simply state that the record of the council committee of the minutes of this meeting, carefully state that we recommend it in the minutes, using the language I proposed here. So it's only in the minutes that this council recommends it.
Agreed.
That the rules committee recommended it.
Right.
Okay, not the full council, but the rules committee.
Okay?
Is that okay?
Perfect.
Then that concludes my report.
I have just one quick comment, again, being there. I think that the mayor has sent a, as Counselor Rist said earlier, encouraging the committees, and I think, certainly I would encourage them personally, and I think by this council action, you know, I think it's sufficient at this time. Thank you.
Okay, that said, I'll take, given the time, apologize for being a little late. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing section of our meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to open the public hearing of our meeting. Any, in case, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion passes. Public hearing is open. What I'd like to do now is open the floor to our finance director, Melissa, to report out on some of the additional information that she's presented us.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I simply, before she does that, review everything, since it's been six months?
Okay, if, the council would like to recap first.
Just to review for the council, we met six weeks ago. We debated the majority opinion, which was against doing voting in favor of this rule. We heard from myself, which is the minority opinion. We had lengthy discussions with, obviously, all the members, employees here, and the insurance advisory committee. At the end of that discussion, two councilors, I believe it was Counselor Derby and Counselor Winnie, requested that the finance director find or seek other quotations on insurance that might be an example of what could be saved, should we have the opportunity to move in a new negotiating way. This is a debate on how we negotiate. To review, it is obvious that this would take the current method of negotiating health insurance out of collective bargaining. It would put it into a new method that had various protections, in my opinion, but protections that are, have, were debated for the employees to negotiate. And that's where we left it. We did receive, as late as last night and early this morning, the treasurer's quotes, which she's about to provide us with and explain, and I'm sure we'll have questions for them. We also received a report from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation on the, how this rule has helped many cities and towns. The mayor is not able to attend this evening, because he and Representative Saibek, whom I also wished to attend, are at the State of the State address by the governor this evening. That being said, and remembering that Counselor Psychowski had asked that we delay a final vote, because we're just getting this information this evening, and to be fair, the insurance advisory committee and any employee, and I asked the personnel director to provide treasurer's memo and these quotations to the insurance advisory committee and to the bargaining unit heads, so that they have time to digest it. I feel that we should, obviously, open the hearing, hear more debate, but I don't feel we should come to a vote unless we have enough, I mean, obviously, this isn't going to change my vote, but it might other councilors, and I do think it's only fair to allow the employees and their representatives to absorb and digest what the treasurer's put forward and come back at the next meeting to respond to it, because it's only out there today. And the personnel director only sent it today, so some of them may not have even received it yet, so... That being said, yours.
I have a couple of sedeways. The first is, to kind of piggyback on what you said, the first is, the letter, actually memo we received from the mayor, I'm going to read that for the public record. Says, "Dear councilors, I will be attending the governor's stated estate address this evening and will not be at your meeting. I urge you to vote in favor of the request and provide a process that guarantees protection to our employees and savings for our taxpayers. We have not been successful in managing health insurance costs, and the process available to us is, in fact, broken, and will force draconian action in the coming months. That is the very reason the legislature and governor enacted the law, was supported by organized labor, and has saved millions of dollars for other communities across the state, balancing the 2014 budget in East Hampton, will require service reductions without bold actions to reduce cost. With your help, we can save money by employing Sections 21 to 23, protecting employee rights and supporting our ability to provide local services. The choice is up to you, and I urge you to vote in favor of adopting Massachusetts General Law Chapter 32B, Sections 21 to 23." The other item, which I just currently forgot...
Do you want to have the treasurer talk while you remember?
Yes. If the finance director would step up to the podium, explain your...
So, the council had asked me to solicit votes, so I did, and I did get that information finalized Tuesday morning, which is why I sent it to the insurance advisory committee Tuesday afternoon, once I compiled it all, and I didn't do an analysis compared to our current program as far as savings until late last night. So, I did get it to you as quickly as I could. But in short, you know, what I looked at was, if you change plan design, can you save money? And you can. But that's not really what the vote's about, isn't about that plan design, or if we can save money with plan design, it's about how you negotiate health insurance changes. So if you have questions about what I wrote there, or about process, we've gone over that a lot, I can go over it again, but there are two types of plan design changes there, and, you know, they both are deductible plans, which are not like what we have now.
Before we get into questioning, I did remember, it has to do with the insurance advisory committee, since we're not voting on this tonight, we would like their feedback. Do they need a certain date or time? Because we can table this or continue it to that date. In order to get us there, in order to review this, do you need, is there, is there anyone here from the committee? Just step forward for a moment, just to, I'm putting you on the spot here.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I know this is new information, and I'm trying to get your feedback from it, but give you time in order to review this correctly. So, since we're not voting on it tonight, when would be an appropriate time to?
I suppose my question would be, what, are you looking for a committee to do what we were supposed to do, and review everything, and either find merit to the quotes and come back with that information, or is it just enough time for us to review it? So I guess it depends on what you're looking for.
I'm actually looking for you to review this thoroughly and give us a recommendation.
Okay. The last time, we had something with dental, with Altus Dental, we rushed it, and it took us two months, and that was really working as quickly as we could. And this is more, in my understanding, I don't know all the numbers, but there's definitely more than just one proposal that's sitting in front of you, so...
Recommendation from anybody? Counselor Rist first, it's your turn.
I don't believe this council should wait two or four months to debate this. I believe that that delays the process too long. I was hoping that they could look at it and, I guess, do what they could, given the plan design changes that the treasurer is suggesting might happen, but again, as she stated, this is not a debate on plan design, because that could happen and could change radically. This is, she's obviously given us an example of what, I believe these are $1,000 deductible plans, and that obviously changes the plan, but it's not what they're proposing. It's showing what big savings could happen, but I'm not, I'm not defending the plan design at all, whether it's one I want, but it is something that needs to be debated. And I think if you look at just the deductibles, co-pays that are in these new plan designs, and respond to what you think, obviously, the employees are going to pay more, no matter what we do, unless we stay with what we have. But, we'd like to hear how you respond, because obviously, and you're all very intelligent, you know this, if we save 780, or $589,000, that's a lot of jobs. So, that's the debate we're having amongst ourselves. That's what we're weighing. How do you feel, given that? I'd rather not wait two months. I really wouldn't, and in fact, I would, I would...
I was actually going to offer compromise and suggest the second meeting in February, but Counselor Hagan first.
Well, I just wanted to say that, in fairness to the advisory committee, this is an administration's proposal, and they brought it August 14th, so they've been five months before they gave anybody any figures, so I certainly would think it's not unreasonable to give them two months to go over the figures, if that's what, if that's what the council has wanted in this, you know, by getting these extra figures. As I said, I, last time, I was prepared to vote last time, based on the past actions of the, of the unions and the administration, so...
Counselor Psychowski?
I believe we waited six weeks for this information that we got this evening, and I think would only, in two weeks more, or two months, I don't think that would hurt at all. I think, I think I want an in-depth review from those people. I want them to look, look in, I want them to come back and talk to us, contact us at home, tell us their problems, if we're not saying something. And one thing I insist, that we do this right, and I'm afraid if we push this this evening, we're not going to be doing it right. And I've received a couple of letters from the people that work for the town, and I'm very concerned about what they said in those letters, and I'm holding that in my, in the back of my mind for making my decision. So I just think they should get the two months, because we waited six weeks for information.
I have a motion on the table this time. Is anybody willing to...
I'm going to make a motion to wait two months.
Excuse me, Mr. President, point of order. My only thinking is, all these people came this evening.
We're going to let them speak.
I don't allow them, but I don't want to table it until after they're done.
Okay.
If we're going to table it. And then, when we're going to, I'd like to debate further, when we're going to bring it back, but we could debate that amongst the council members.
With that said, I'm going to open this up to the public. If there's anyone in the public who would like to speak to this issue, please step forward, state your name and address. For the podium, please, that's for our record. Anyone who wants to come first?
Good evening, councilors. Jimmy Dunham, Severwood Drive, East Hampton. I come before you tonight to say that I think that adopting this new legislation is a very bad move on the part of the city and for the employees, for a number of reasons. First and foremost being, if you've seen the proposals that were put out today by what could be for the insurance programs, you'll see that they're drastically different than anything that we have right now. And it is clearly a shift of burden onto the backs of all the employees. It does not even define, in the proposals that were laid out here, much of the information that's needed. It says, it refers to things like deductibles. I've heard it said that it's going to be $1,000 per person, per year. We've got people in this city that are making $500 a month on a pension. There's, there's no way that they're going to be able to afford to pay those kind of rates. And the, the other thing is, if this is an example, which I believe it is, of where the city is going to go immediately, this law has not even been adapted yet, adopted yet, I'm sorry, and they're looking to put us into some sort of a program with huge deductibles, huge co-payments, you know, and it's a one-year program. So these rates... So, these rates that they're being quoted now are simply something to induce people to get into that program. A year from now, you watch what happens to those rates. You're going to see double-digit increases, I almost guarantee it. And at that time, there's no way that we can go back into the trust where we are now. Now, we've been in the trust for many, many years. They've always treated us fairly. They have $25 million in an escrow account to prevent increases in premiums, okay? These other insurance providers don't have that. Now, that's going to be up to the insurance advisory committee to investigate this and get the details, but just as they did with the dental program, which looked all perfect, until they investigated and found out that it wasn't applicable to our city at all. I believe that they're going to have the opportunity to do this the same way. Unfortunately, all of this stuff should have been sent to the insurance advisory committee to look at first, before anything was presented to anyone, because as of this moment right now, the insurance, 32b insurance advisory committee is still a standing committee, and it will be until, unless, something else is adopted. And by law, which I brought a copy of, if anybody doubts it, it says that any insurance program from the administration shall be submitted to the insurance advisory committee for their review, and by a majority vote of that committee, then brought back to the executive branch. And I don't see that being followed at all. So, the other two things I think that are very important is, one, the city is now receiving $65,000 a year back from the trust, and has for several years, and will continue to. And they are the only insurance company here of these that are presented, that have applied and been granted to get this money. It's a federally funded program that they took the time and effort to apply for, and were granted, and they get that $65,000. I think that that's probably... The other thing, the only other thing that I found, kind of fought with, was the, if you looked at the insurance papers that you were issued today, the proposals, if you look at the Medicare section, it absolutely devastates retirees. It's horrible. And if this is the best plan that they can come up with in looking to take us out of this, I don't know what to say, because once that city council accepts this, it's a done deal. There's no recourse, we can't undo the law, we can't do anything. And they can just pretty much devastate their employees. And, you know, if you're looking at a city that's looking to hire quality people and keep quality people, you've got to offer them a decent benefit. And we've spent many years negotiating for the insurance that we have right now. And over those years, we've given up things, and just to try to keep and maintain a decent level of insurance. And as you can see by the amount of... As you can see by the amount of people that are here tonight, it's close, near and dear to everybody's heart. This is a very important matter, and you people have it all in your hands. Thank you very much.
Welcome. Before we begin with the next speaker, what I'd like to do is, I know there was already a meeting here that was fairly short. If there's anyone who here was from that last meeting who didn't get an opportunity to speak, I'd like them to have the opportunity to step up first and address, state their name and address for the council. Seeing none, is there anybody else who would like to step up and address the council? Do we have someone here?
Good evening. My name's Allison Rabello, 43 Partridge Lane, Chicopee. I'm an employee of East Hampton City. First of all, thank you for listening to the people who'd like to speak tonight and taking that time. I have also huge concerns with changing the health insurance and going with the new legislation. For, I'll speak from a personal point of view, from what other people are speaking. Up until a year ago, I was extremely healthy, had over 100 sick days, was never out. To be honest with you, a year ago, two years ago, I probably wouldn't even be speaking with you, because I thought that health insurance wasn't important. I certainly found out that that was a huge mistake on my part, because a year ago, I was diagnosed with breast cancer. Having a diagnosis is huge to begin with, but one of the things that was really important was having the Blue Cross Blue Shield and having that good insurance. Every time I had a surgery, a treatment, anything like that, everything was paid for, and they made it clear to me that because I had the insurance that I had, that that was one of the reasons why. Another thing that I think is really important, I realize from working in the schools, that money and dealing with a budget is crucial, but there's things that you can't put price tags on. I realize that, you know, maybe going to a different insurance can save the town, can save the city, some money, but you can't put a price tag on employees' lives and what they have to deal with. If anything happens to anybody, you know, they're then dealing with the financial burden of having to pay the, you know, extra co-pays, or having to pay, you know, a deductible. And so, one thing that I did not have to worry about was having to come up with money to pay the deductibles and deal with the stress that comes along with that. The other piece that you can't put a price tag on is that when you have good care, and when your doctors and surgeons are telling you it's because you have a good insurance, and you don't have to deal with the stress of it, you're also out of work less. And so, I think that you also need to take a look and think about that, you know, as employees are sick or whatever, the better care that they have, the sooner that they are able to return to work, and they're not out as many days. And so, when you're dealing with, you know, substitutes or lack of staff to be able to work, I think that those are all things that need to be considered, in addition to, you know, the actual cost of what's happening. So, I ask you to, you know, please consider thinking of all the employees that are here, and thinking about, you know, how that will benefit them, as opposed to just one price tag and maybe a small cost savings, but thinking about all of those things that go along, that you can't put a price tag on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to step forward and address the council on this issue?
My name is Jason Dunham. I'm the union president for the firefighters, and an elected member of the insurance advisory board, and have been for the last eight years. I know I spoke at the last meeting. Just quickly, obviously, there's two sides of this. There's the facts and figures side, and then, as you just saw, there's the emotional side to it. Every one of us in here wants to be able to provide for their families, their spouses, their children's. Financial burdens come with the co-pays, certainly a $1,000 deductible, $500 deductible is something huge, that we, you know, we continually try and work with the city. I know on the insurance advisory board, and just as a union member, whenever it comes up, I know in 2008, they said, "Listen, you know, we're having real hard financial times here. We need to take on another 5% of the health insurance premiums." All the unions agreed, "Okay, no problem." I know last year, they're turning around, saying, "Listen, we can't afford to give you raises. You know, I'm sorry, that's just, there's just too much financial constraint on the city right now." We're saying okay to that. But then to turn around, and number one, take health insurance out of collective bargaining, which has been working effectively and efficiently, and two, give us plans with $500 deductibles or $1,000 deductibles on top of it. It's a little bit hard here, and that's obviously where the emotional side comes in. I mean, along with that, the facts and figures, and I know one of the concerns that you guys had was the marketability. And you feel that if we adopt 21 through 23, we're going to be more marketable? But the financial director just went to four insurance companies, said, "Give me four bids." She got three. So, that, to me, says we're marketable. The only one that didn't give her a bid was Maya. Now, the financial director said she had worked with Maya before, they're competitive rates. I talked to the personnel director today, so why didn't they give it? No? What happened? Maya turned around and told them, "They can't compare to the Hampshire County Trust," that they wouldn't be able to give a competitive rate, and that's why they didn't give it. Another thing you said is, you know, the two months to break down all these things. We have forms that we fill out. The information that we got from the finance director, in these rates, there's a lot more to it. We have to break it down into, you know, medications and co-pays and deductibles, all the way across the board. And there's definitely a lot of work, which we will do, and if you give us two months, we're going to do, or try our hardest to get it done, just like with the dental insurance or anything else. But I would just caution you and say that, when I was thinking about this, you just, you look at the positives and you look at the negatives, right? The positives with the trust. Number one, you can always tell your future, if you're looking at your past, right? Hampshire County Trust has always been good to us. We've had three years of 0% increases. Is it six years for the retirees? They're forecasting another year of 0% increases. $65,000 kickback, that's nice. The $25 million in reserves, I don't know anyone else in the state of Massachusetts that has that. And we, the money that we paid in there, some of that money, is ours. So, let's use that benefit. Let's take advantage of that. And they're obviously using it to help offset the health insurance costs that they say they're going to do, or else we wouldn't have three years of 0% increases, and one more year that they're saying is coming right now. Let's not walk away from that. And then I looked at the plus one, and I said, "Is this really a benefit, and how big is it?" Well, let me take, right now, our rates, our premiums, let's take the 93 members that participate in the plus one. Let's eliminate that and move them all over to a family plan. Is that a little save, is that going to be a little cost increase to the city, or a lot? You have the same figures in front of you, it's $550,000 if you go to a plan or a carrier that doesn't provide the plus one. It's just something else to think about. Being in the trust gives us security and stability. And I told you this last time, the other health insurance companies, they're going to give you a low bid. And after they do, the cost-benefit analysis, they're going to increase the rates. And I don't know about you, or what you have for health insurance, but ask yourselves, have you ever seen it go down? Because it doesn't. And once you go up there, we're at least three years out to get back into the trust for some security and some stability. It is a smart way to go. If it changes, we can always adopt this law at a later time. Now is definitely not the time.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to step forward and address the council on this issue? Please, state your name.
As with Mr. Dunham, I don't have a prepared speech. One of the things that we all can obviously see, this is a very emotional issue for all of us. I did the same thing. I put a lot of thought into this over the last few nights, and literally have actually lost sleep. I'm trying to figure out what I want to say and how I want to say it. I will tell you that I'm not happy, as an employee, that this is being pushed off again. That's, to be honest. We were here as the insurance advisor committee, and we had our subcommittee meetings, I believe is what they were called, in August, September, whenever that was. We were back here in November, room full of people. I'm glad to see you're back. I know you weren't here for that. And here we are again, only to be told that we're going to push this off one more time. I understand the reason why it wants to be pushed off. If we take everything that was already said today, and I give Ms. Rabello a ton of credit for coming up here and sharing personal information like she did, and on her side of it, the, I just want to reiterate, the money can never replace what was saved, and that essentially is her life. And you will never know what you're going to save if you continue with the plan. Then again, you never know what you're going to risk on the other side. As for this new law, I think what's happened over the last three months, or six weeks, excuse me, since the November committee meeting, is a perfect example of why this law will never work for the city of East Hampton. The law, essentially, if I break it down, is identical to the plan, or to the design in what we use right now. There's an advisory committee. When something is brought up to the advisory committee, it is brought to them. We do that right now, just like you just asked us to do. Can you do this? Can you break this down? Absolutely. That is also in the law. It takes time. With the Altus, when Altus Dental approached us, and we were approached by, I believe it's the mayor that brought it up, we looked at it and said, "Absolutely. If this can save all of us money, why would we not want to save money if the plan is the same?" Who would not? We looked at it, we brought the Altus representative in, put on a great presentation, everything looked fantastic. It took a lot of investigation to find out there was smoke and mirrors. It was absolutely false, what they were promising us and what they were telling us. So, with that said, the new law, how does that vary from what we have right now? We have a proposal, we have our subfinance committee. Right now, if we keep it the way we have it, and you vote no, we have time to vote on, to look into this, to do extensive research, to find out whether this is going to save the city and its employees money, all the time in the world. With the new law, it gives us 30 days. A question that was raised by, I apologize whoever's standing in for you as the president at the last meeting, question that was raised that we were not able to answer is, "Why would the insurance advisory committee not want this law?" Well, that's the reason, because there is no way we can come up with any type of information, at least good information, in 30 days. If we, if you adopt this law, it's 30 days, period. No answers or butts about it. And as we can see, the finance director, in six weeks, had six weeks to come up with something. Well, two extra weeks, we can all do the math, two extra weeks over to 30 days. If she can't even do something within six weeks, how the heck can we do something within 30 days? The last part of it is when we do not come to an agreement, which I don't see how it can actually happen, we don't come to an agreement, there is now, it goes to a, excuse me, the new law proposes that you have to go to a three-member committee. That three-member committee is made up of a person from the insurance advisory committee, a person from the city, which we already know disagree, the last representative is a representative from the state. So, if you take two people out of the equation, the person that's going to make the decision for the city and its employees is the state. So, ultimately, if we take what happened here this past six weeks and apply this law, we're not making decisions, you're not making the decisions, the state is. So, that is why, as the insurance advisory committee member, as well as an employee, this law is not for us. We've been fiscally responsible, we've shown that to the state, they required it. Representative Seibach even mentioned and said, "It's not for everybody." He didn't say it was for East Hampton, it wasn't for East Hampton, he said, "It's not for everybody." It's not for us. So, the only thing I would ask, is once everything's said and done here, if there's no other speakers, is we can vote this, you can vote this in at any time. You don't have to adopt it now. However, I would ask you to have some serious discussion on what you want to do, because asking everyone to come back again, we would do it, I guarantee it. You know what? Every time, it's going to be more and more people here, because it's more people now than it was last time. We'll be here. These are the people it's going to affect. And if you look around and actually look in their eyes, you can tell how important this is to them. We do not want this changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Constantine, 17 Melinda Lane, 16-year veteran of the fire department here in town. As you know, I sent you all a letter with my feelings. I'd like to just go over that letter and kind of recap some things here, and I'll go along with, again, what Al said about, you know, 30 days, sitting down with the city. We've been sitting down with the city for two years. We've been sitting down with the city for two years and we can't get a contract yet. So we're not gonna be able to get anything done in 30 days with the history we have here. We have a process in place and it works. And adopting this law will take more of the rights away from workers. And unfortunately, we're seeing more and more of that in our country, and I do not know why we're going down this path. So in essence, this law restricts the input that employees have in their healthcare plan decision. It shifts more of the decision-making power over to the employer. I do not think that employees are entitled to healthcare in this country, but they should have access to affordable healthcare. Why are we looking to strip more rights away from city workers? Employees have the right to organize and negotiate fair compensation and benefit packages. Taking away the right is another attempt to marginalize the worker in this country, starting on the local level. Yes, we have a healthcare crisis, but it's not the fault of the worker, who works hard day in and day out to make a decent living. It's a much bigger than this. Why balance the healthcare crisis on the workers' backs? I'm asking you to please look long and hard at this issue and make an informed decision. Right now, there is a process to negotiate healthcare without compromising the rights of workers. Why do we have difficulty with this issue with the city? Well, the facts are clear. The city's executive office refuses to negotiate face-to-face with its employees. It spends thousands of dollars on lawyers and refuses to treat employees with dignity and respect. The city really has not negotiated fairly with the employees. The city has told the employees what it wants and does not bother to negotiate resolves to issues, including those of healthcare. The employees are continually bringing ideas and solutions to the cities, but the ideas fall on deaf ears. Adopting this law will essentially strip the rights of workers. We talk about, I listened to the letter that you'd written, that the mayor had sent and stuff, and said, "Well, the unions agreed to this, you know, up on the Hill, on the state level." Well, there's a lot more to that. It's like, you know, it's like looking at a soundbite that the media likes to put out. There was a lot more to that. And we had to compromise on a state level. Workers in the state had to compromise on other things and had to accept what they got. They didn't have a choice. And one of those was the Evergreen Clause, you know, so that had to go with it. So there's other things that are happening there. I know you have a responsibility to the taxpayers of the city. I understand that. But if good-faith negotiations were fostered by the city in the first place, we would not be discussing this matter with you right now. Please do not erode the right of workers any further. Allow the workers to be able to bring the issue of healthcare plans to the negotiating table and discuss it. I ask that you please, you know, do not support this law. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to address a few things. First of all, there's no proposal to change health insurance from the executive office at this time. So no clock would start under new rules or old rules. I turned that information around 24 hours after I got it. Six weeks is what it took the health insurance story to come back. So that 30-day clock starts when a full proposal, with all the backup of copays and what deductibles are and all that, is submitted to the Insurance Advisory Committee and whatever amount of time in the current process. I just want to be clear about that. I didn't sit on anything for six weeks. I turned it around really quickly. And yes, it's brief and summarized, but I turned it around as quick as I could. Second of all, I want to say that I have to agree with Al that I don't think there's any reason to extend this any further. This is not the place to negotiate health insurance. It has to be negotiated. It doesn't usually get negotiated right here. So up or down, I think you should make a decision tonight. And then I would also say that I think that people are forgetting that there were, I mean, two, like, off-the-cuff suggestions on what saved money. And there were two types of plan proposed by the insurance companies. One was the $1,000 deductible plan and one was the GIC-like plan. But I think that people are forgetting that with this legislation, you wouldn't be allowed to do a $1,000 deductible plan. It's not allowed. There is minimum coverage protection in that law, 21 through 23. So there are some things in there that actually, you know, "I have to have knee surgery." You know, it matters to me too. So, you know, there is some things in the law that would, that support the working employees in what kind of changes can be made. And that's all I have to say.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Maureen Lee. I'm retired nurse in the school system. I've worked for 19 years. And I took the job for one year because we needed health insurance. I loved it. I loved my job and I stayed. And now, being retired, thankfully, I still have insurance, along with Medicare. Please do not change a thing. Everything has worked through any medical issues I've had, my family has had. It's worked. And I really stand behind everybody here in hoping that you'll do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I know who you are, but please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Dennis Lacour, 238 Park Street, citizen. I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about the, a couple of things. First, I spent 24 years working for the Metropolitan Imprensial Insurance Companies. And I have a background in the group medical insurance, so I have a pretty good understanding about insurance companies and how they operate. The insurance trust that you currently involved in is one of the best-managed trusts in the entire state of Massachusetts. It's really very well-managed. It's managed to your benefit. And one thing nobody's talked about tonight is your position to negotiate. That trust puts you in a position, as a city, to better negotiate health contracts, benefits, and rates. Rates that have not gone up in three years and are not going up next year. And I defy you to look at any insurance company who has not increased their rates over the last four years. When you get out of that trust, you are gonna lose that negotiating position. Believe me, with the number of employees that are covered in retirees in East Hampton, you are gonna be worth nothing to the insurance company. They will care less who you are, 'cause you don't come from a position of strength. When you're in the trust, you come from a position of strength. Don't give that up. You're giving up something that's done very well. You certainly can be more involved in the trust. You have representatives on the trust. You can get involved in the trust to talk about plan changes or saving money there. It doesn't all have to happen here. And let us not forget one thing. Insurance companies are in the business to make a profit. And that's the bottom line. There is no company out there that doesn't make a profit. Just talk to anybody who had a big claim in the May snowstorm. When their renewal came up, they probably got dropped by the insurance company. What's gonna happen here is that when the insurance company's profits are not there, they go to two areas. They go to benefits and premiums. That's where they look to make up the profits, 'cause they have stockholders they answer to. And those profits have to be there. So please, don't lose sight what the big print given, the little print taken away. I mean, that's the way it is. And another thing I'll talk about is many of the city employees who came to work for this city, many of the retirees, over the years, took these jobs for lesser pays. CDL drivers out there working for Public Works and the Fire Department and Police Department and the Water Department, they certainly can earn better wages in the private sector. But one of the motivations of coming to work for municipal government or the city of East Hampton was that you had a good benefit package. And that was part of it. They're willing to give up the wages to have a good benefit package, to take their legs out from under them, especially the retirees that are living, the retirees that retired 10 years ago, that are living on very limited amounts of income. That's a terrible thing to do to those people, 'cause you've just changed everything. You're in a good position. Think very hard and very clearly about what you're gonna give up. So pretty much, that's what I need to say about it. Thank you.
Go around one more time. Is there anybody here who would like to, please step forward, state your name and address for the council, please?
Good evening. My name is Rachel Nicholas. I'm a teacher at Whitebrook Middle School. I've worked for the town of East Hampton, city of East Hampton, for 12 years. I love working here. I am part of the resurgence of East Hampton, the young people who've come to take jobs in the city, the people who have passion, who care about your children, who take care of your children. I have two points I'd like to make. The first is, I myself had to use the insurance very recently. I was healthy my whole life, and in the process of giving birth to my daughter, I got a blood clot. Because I had the health insurance from the city, I had the most excellent care. I never had to worry. I had nurses calling me every week to make sure that my care was followed through with. As a result, I had therapies, I had clinics, and my health returned quickly as a result of the insurance that we currently have. I was able to get back to work, and I'm working now. Many people who have no healthcare or have poor healthcare have issues like this that end up lingering. People with diabetes, people with high blood pressure, people with heart disease. These are all issues that people don't take care of when they don't have good insurance, because they're afraid of the amount of money that it costs to take care of these issues. I didn't have to worry about that. And I want you to think about the fact that a healthy workforce results in more productivity. It results in fewer used sick days, which in the long run means you don't pay as much money, because you have people actually working instead of taking those sick days or taking the workman's comp days. So that's my first point. The second point that I'd like to bring up is that you want the best people working for the city. The people who live in East Hampton want the best firefighters possible. They want the best police people possible. Why? Because our community gets better when we have these people working for us. When people buy houses, they want to know that the school systems are fabulous, that they have excellent, highly qualified teachers working for the school system, that they have a police department that they can count on to follow through with crime and with prevention, and a fire department that's gonna be there when they need it. Why do people take jobs for public? They take the jobs because they have benefits and because they think that the people who are employing them care about them. People have come to East Hampton, teachers, police officers, firefighters, because they know it's a wonderful place to work. They know, at least in the past, that they were gonna get taken care of. And I think you're gonna find that if you pass this, you're gonna have a drop in the highly qualified people willing to work for your system. As it is, our school right now is having trouble employing a couple of positions, because we've decided to make cuts that make those positions less attractive to other people. How many other positions are gonna start going unfilled if you pass this law? We have lots of people in the area. The Mass Pike's right there, 91 is right there, Connecticut's right there. How many people are gonna flee East Hampton? Great workers that you currently have, future workers who are looking to have jobs in a wonderful community like East Hampton, but can't afford to any longer? I want you to think about that, not just now, but also in the future. We're not just talking about money, we're talking about your workforce and your community and property values. Thank you.
I'm gonna accept, just to make sure everybody has an opportunity, please, if there's anyone, a member of the public who would like to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Brendan Taylor. I live at 16 Palmero Meadow Road, East Hampton. I know everyone forgets that, 'cause it's only four houses, and they think I live in Southampton, but I do live in East Hampton. I guess, I've been to a bunch of symposiums on this law as it got passed. We've talked to Seibek extensively. I work for the fire department as well. And we discussed, you know, the proposal and why it was brought forward. And I understand that, you know, they were trying to save money for the city. And I understand the point that, I forget your name, Melissa, the point that she made that, you know, you can't get any lower than the GIC as far as coverage-wise. There's certain minimums that you have to have in place, and that's true. However, I've had meetings at the PFFM level, the Professional Fire Fighters of Massachusetts level, with all these different fire departments that have, their cities adopted this. They've been, basically, the negotiating 30 days that they talked about never amounted to anything in any one of them. I watched person after person from department after department come up and say, "We couldn't come up with anything in 30 days. State came in, we're on the GIC." Well, that's great, except for the fact that, obviously, GIC coverage is not as good as what we have now. It may save the town a little bit of money, but the other problem that came from that is that as these towns went into the GIC, you would think that their bargaining would get better, but actually, the GIC do the risks of having to add all these other towns. I believe it was like a 12% rate increase in one year, if I'm correct, as far as I remember it. It was a 12% increase. So all these towns jumped on board, then they do the risk analysis, and as the other gentleman said, the insurance companies aren't gonna lose money. They're not gonna, they're not gonna join on and say, you know, "We'll give you a deal and we'll save money." They're gonna do a risk analysis, and then they're gonna adjust your rates accordingly. You can look, if you want to see into the future, you can look at Northampton, I know Salem is an employee there, and they decided to remove themselves from the GIC, I mean, I'm sorry, not the GIC, the Hampshire County Trust. And then they wanted to get back in, because they realized that the grass wasn't so much greener on the other side. And unfortunately, as Jason said, you know, you gotta wait three years. They bounced around between a couple of different insurances. I'm sure you've had at least two since you've been there. So they're trying to save money. They thought they could save money, and they can't. And so they're bouncing around, trying to find ways to save money. You know, I guess, I guess my biggest concern, I don't understand why we're here at this point, considering the fact that there was a meeting not that long ago, I believe it was Rules and Regulation, Mr. Riss, maybe you remember, if that's the committee it was, that discussed a petition to remove collective bargaining, health insurance from collective bargaining. We discussed, it was kind of like a home rule petition, if you recall. You don't remember that? Am I incorrect on that? There was a, there was a...
There was one in May of last year for Chapter 32B, Section 3, which we puzzled over and dropped.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm talking about.
We dropped it because it was the wrong section.
Okay. But, I mean, what you're really trying to, what you're doing is you're training one way of bargaining for a more broken way of bargaining. 'Cause 30 days, it's really not bargaining. At that point, the state steps in, and you're gonna have to basically end up wherever they're gonna, gonna put you. Because, you know, if your city and your employees can't agree, which is what a lot of people are saying is a problem with our system now, and the state's gonna be the third person in, as was stated by someone else, well, then who's really making the decision? The state is. So, I mean, you're really not solving anything. I believe that our system works. I believe that we've come to the table with some numerous ideas of ways to save money for the city in regards to health insurance. I can only speak from the fire department's side and the negotiations that I've worked on. We've come up with numerous proposals to change the language in our contract, to allow the city more unilateral movement in regards to health insurance. And I think that we should stick to that path, because I really think, as Constantine had mentioned, that removing rights, basically, from the worker to negotiate it, 'cause that's what this does, you know, 'cause 30 days, like, isn't anything for negotiation, you're just cutting out the workers' rights and somewhat the city's rights, as we said, 'cause the state's gonna make a lot of the decisions. So I think, as we stated before, you know, we can, we can look at all these other plans and see how much money we can save, but what we're really talking about is how do we want to make this decision moving forward? We see... We see that the decision in the past has worked, being in the Hampshire County Trust. They talked about the $25 million that are in there, they talked about the kickback, they talked about how we've had 0 percent increases. It's worked. And I understand you guys are looking for ways to save money, and I understand, I'm a taxpayer too. I don't want my taxes going up, you know, but there are some things that you have to be willing to make allotments for. And, you know, I think that supporting the workers, supporting their rights to collective bargain, even if it may not be, you know, the thing to do nowadays, you know, as the other places decide to, to remove that as an option, I think that we should hold true to what we've been doing. I think it's been doing well, and I think that we can come up with some solutions. If the town really needs to save money, I know from my own experience that the union is, is there to help out. We don't want to lose jobs. Who wants, who wants the buddy that they just, you know, that's running into a fire with him worried about whether or not he's going to lose his job? I don't. Because he's going to be thinking about that, he's not going to be thinking about the fact that he's got my back, you know? So, I think there are better ways to handle this. I think that negotiation in the form that we use it now is a powerful tool, and I think we should continue to use it. I think adopting this law is really not going to behoove anybody in a, in a positive way. And that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll allow, give us a timeframe, and I do have something I want to say. I'm going to allow two more speakers. If there are people who haven't had an opportunity to speak, please step forward in the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. What I'd like to do is I have a brief statement to make, and we have two things going on here. I'm going to actually suggest that we respect the councilors and the chair of rules' suggestion to actually table this, but I do have something I want to say. Counselor Risk.
May I suggest that my suggestion, I am confused about my suggestion right now. And I, I'm confused because I've heard from the Insurance Advisory Committee that it'll take two months to do this, but I've also heard from members that they don't want to wait any longer, that we've been here and done through this a lot. I'm influenced by the finance director who would rather we vote on it. So I guess I have to ask maybe, Jason, and you could tell me, do you want to look at this? Because I was trying to be fair in that we just got this information, or do you want us to vote this evening? My whole purpose in delaying the vote was to give the Insurance Advisory Committee time to respond to the finance director's, it's not a proposal, her examples. I think that's the only fair way to say it. So, did either of you want to respond to that? What do you, what do you guys want?
Am I supposed to stand?
Well, maybe you both have to discuss it first, but I'd like to know if you want us to wait.
Put us on the spot.
Yeah, put us on the spot. But if you guys, all right, well.
I do have something to say.
Some of the proposals that are here right now, they're not even, I mean, they don't hold any weight at all because no matter what, even if we adopt the law, they can't, it is, we're not going to go to the $1,000 deductible, but the $250 deductible. And I guess if you guys feel that you're well enough informed, I mean, these proposals right here, this is not what it's actually going to be at all. I mean, they could be a lot more and a lot worse for all the employees. You understand that, right? Like, the cost savings might not be there at all. The only way to know is if we completely break it down. And it's up to you guys, I guess, if you feel that you're informed enough with that. There's definitely variables here. There's nothing here that is concrete at all. We could go in and do an investigation and find out that the savings, if we were to switch to a different plan, is going to be five bucks, but next year you're going to spend $10 after they do the cost analysis.
The question presented to the members of the committee was one of, do you wish us to vote on this tonight, or do you wish us to allow you time to look at the information that was presented tonight?
Can we just let us caucus for a minute?
Sure. Most of our members are here.
Yeah, we'll just have a quick meeting. I just don't feel comfortable.
I'll address the public on, on what I had here. I did have a quick opportunity to look at the information that was presented tonight, and I'll state what I actually read through this. Basically, not to disparage the finance director's information, she provided us exactly what we asked for, no more, no less. But I found it a little incomplete in, in to provide an analysis that would allow me to vote. The first thing I noticed was, again, the $1,000 deductibles. I know after reading the law that those would simply be rejected. There's not a possibility we can do that because they're way above the GIC benchmark in, in terms of deductibles. So I crossed them off. The Fallon Plan that was developed here, that's more expensive. I crossed that one off. I then went to the Health and Ringland GIC Light Plan, and I looked down at the individual Medicare Supplement part of that and realized that was more expensive. I crossed that off. That left me with one plan. When I look at that, what that says to me is, I call that limited choice fallacy. And so, there are information here that I didn't quite have that I could make a decision, and those two things were the plan design features and what GIC Light really meant, what was it benchmark after. I did get the, some rough information concerning the deductibles and copays because the idea is here, are we doing, are we taking and saving money by shifting the burden on employees in, in the form of just their copays and deductibles and a tiering system, or are we saving money from a premium cost? And that's what's not spelled out here. Now, people have said to me that it's really not germane, that we're here to vote on a new way of negotiating. I disagree. I say it is germane because we're looking at doing something that's different, throwing out the old way of doing something and doing something new. And I need to know before I do something new that we're going to save substantial money to move in that direction. And so I think the information is germane, and I didn't see that here. I also would like to know, and I'll ask this later, if RFPs were put out and what the information, what was, what was asked for? Were they just phone calls? And there were a number of other issues with this information that I have, but I, I'll keep it simple to say that we also had a number of things here. We had a negative report to do this from the advisory committee before. We also had a majority of the rules committee to vote down this. We also saw information from the public employees indicating the savings we are making. There are things to remember in that minority report, like the 5 percent rule and the one to three years split that we have here where with the trust, we're in there for one year. So, I fully expect that there'll be premium hikes simply due to the Affordable Care Act this year. And if we don't like what the trust is doing, within a year's time, we can get out. If we go with this plan, with the same scenario, this is hypothetical, where it happened in a GIC plan, we're stuck with it for three years, and that doesn't give us a greater flexibility. There are a number of issues like that to me that are simply not convincing me that the right way to go is to go with this, the right thing for the city and the right way to go is to go with approval of this information. So I'm prepared to do anything. If you want to table it to get the, to get the advisory committee's input fine, if you want to vote on it tonight, I'm prepared to vote on it tonight. That's all I got to say. I want, before I ask the finance director come up, I'd like the advisory committee, have they settled yet?
They're still talking, not Melissa.
Melissa, you have the floor.
Just now, it's been said several times, I never said that this would save employees' money.
Sorry, I can't hear.
I never said this would, I never said that this would save employees' money. It's always been about a cost shift. I've never been unclear about that.
That's correct.
So, to say, and what the GIC plan looks like, it looks like your health insurance. You're in the GIC.
Please speak up, please. Harvey here.
I just said that, from the beginning, this enactment, I never said that this would save employees' money. I always said that it was about changing plan design, and when you change plan design, you change your benefits. I've never, I've never denied that. That's always what this proposal has been about. It's what the legislation is about. And so, and I agree with you that the trust is a wonderful organization, but they are totally inflexible about plan design at this time. We could not get those kind of rates for the same thing anywhere. I know that. I just, I hate it when you say that like, this is some backwards way. I've always said, this is what we're doing. And you either want to change it the way that the legislation is, or we go the old way. But either way, a change design is coming to you to be negotiated, one way or the other. And what you need to decide is, you know, how you want us to negotiate that, and if you feel that your current system is the best system to protect yourselves, then advocate for that. And if you feel like the legislation offers you protection, then advocate for that.
Thank you. Gentlemen, please, again for the record, this is the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay. So, tough, tough spot we are in.
The decision, please.
We did make the decision. We would like the city council to make a decision tonight.
Okay. Are all the councils okay with that? Hey, to the president. Counselor Risk.
I want to make it clear that my only reason for tabling it was because this information was given to you this evening. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I wasn't trying to delay the vote. I was primarily trying to give fairness to you. But, to be fair to the treasurer, she did not make a proposal of what the new healthcare plans might be. She was asked to give examples of how things might save money in the future. You, of course, provided very strong arguments for keeping it the same way. But her proposals, her, her examples were not meant as negotiating points for the administration. They are not. In fact, they can't be, as pointed out, because of the law, $1,000 deductibles, et cetera. So I want to defend the fact that she wasn't trying to propose any new plan design. She was given the task of how much could we save if we change plan designs in these ways? And she tried to demonstrate that to the best of her ability, and she works her butt off doing it, and I appreciate it. But I wanted all the employees to hear that she did not attempt to negotiate a new plan design this evening. She was answering a task from the city council as best she could, and the examples are, of cour, almost hypothetical to a certain degree. Because as you say, there's a lot of negotiation, a lot of nuts and bolts that aren't, you know, that have to be worked on.
I think we all, just, just from the brief caucus, I believe you all understand, the only question that was posed is, if the $1,000 deductible isn't allowed via the law and through the GIC, why was it even there? That's the only question. Nor do we want to debate that. And, and I'll be honest, on a personal level, I would not want to be in Melissa's shoes. There's no doubt, she's, she's a voice. She's a voice for the mayor, and we understand that, and we understand she's doing her job. So, it's nothing personal. So, the only thing I would ask is, is, the only thing I would kind of do is just kind of sum up and go back to what we originally proposed back in November. I'm not going to read the letter that the Insurance Advisory Committee gave you unless you want me to for the record, but as for the record, the Insurance Advisory Committee does not want you to adopt the laws as presented. We would like to stay exactly the way we are with no changes whatsoever.
I will remove my suggestion for tabling if that's the wish of the council. I, I will not make a motion in that regard. It's up to someone else to do so if they want to.
All ready to vote on this? Yes. Hey?
Then I'll make a motion. I believe the clerk gave me this, and tell me if I'm wrong. I move that the city of East Hampton elect to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under Mass General Law, Section 32B, Sections 21 through 23.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the aforementioned proposal. Before we begin, I do have a parliamentary procedure. Do I have to close the hearing first before we do this motion?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure, I want to make it clear.
I have a motion on the public, Jim.
Hey?
But you might want to reiterate that there's going to be no comment.
Uh, yeah.
It's now between the councils.
It's on the council, so there's no further comment on this, on this motion. This is just a council issue at this point. That said, all those in favor of the motion as stated?
We need a discussion.
You want a discussion first?
I think we do.
Probably.
Fair enough. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Melissa will start from that end and work your way down.
Any further discussion on a motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Joy, Council Winnie?
There's two more down there, too.
Okay, well, who would like to go first? Council Winnie, you haven't spoken yet, if you would like to go first.
Guys can go first.
Hey, Council Ziegler?
Okay. I just want to be clear on a couple of things here first. The adoption of 32B and, and the trust. The adoption of 32B wouldn't mean that we couldn't continue to go forward with the trust if the trust continued to be the best plan that was, again, negotiated. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
That we're not saying that it just has to be, oh, well, this one's the most cost-effective or something like that. You still have the ability to negotiate. It's not about the cheapest plan as much as it is the negotiation.
Don't have the ability to negotiate.
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
The, well, the process involved is...
What I'm saying is with the 32B, you still have the whole process, process of negotiation. You have the, the...
Counselor Risk, would you like to answer?
I think if you let him finish, he's saying that there is the 30 days, which is the question mark, but you do have that. And the Hampshire Trust is not eliminated as a potential provider, shall we say. It's not eliminated. They may be forced, if we take this into consideration, they may be forced to adopt a plan design that is competitive if they want East Hampton to participate, but it does not automatically eliminate, if that's the answer, the Hampshire Trust. It does not eliminate that.
Hey?
Because, again, I have...
Council Ziegler, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have, of course, worked for the Northampton Public Schools and been through the design and the different plan designs and seen how we actually were able to continue to provide the services and maintain the workforce within the Northampton Public Schools by adopting and changing the, the plan design. So, it is one of those things where it can provide the ability to continue with the services that are, are currently available. And I'm just very concerned when, a few weeks ago, we, a month ago, we were hearing that there's going to be this $900,000 budget shortfall in, potentially in the, the city schools. Again, that's something that I was faced as an administrator in the Northampton Public Schools, and we were able to, through plan design, find some substantial cost savings. So I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding correctly that it's not just saying automatically that the, you know, the trust is, is still on the table, it just has to be able to be competitive.
Thank you. Counselor Risk?
Well, I wanted to make it clear that this entire, my entire position on this was to save jobs. I believe strongly, given the vote of, of the city recently, to not override our taxes. We could only raise taxes 2.5 percent. We have very little new growth, so the ability of our city to have new revenue, to continue to pay costs such as healthcare, although in our city, this is good, I would admit that, our healthcare costs haven't gone up in three years, but other costs go up continually. And we can't match those expense costs increasing with new taxes. We can't. We could ask another override to save jobs, but obviously the city, the East Hampton residents are not prepared for that. So for me, the evidence that was presented to me by my investigation, the Massachusetts taxpayers' statements that gave out tonight indicate that many cities and towns are saving money, indicate that this might save a lot of jobs in the future, in the very near future. I believe the next budget will, we will see layoffs, unfortunately, especially in the schools. I also know that, I believe strongly that this does not remove the employee's ability to negotiate healthcare. It changes how you do it. All that being said, I do know that this has been the most difficult decision that I have made on a city council, and I've been on it since there's been a city council, because the employees of this town, I have teachers that teach my grandchildren, I have police and firemen that have saved my son's life. This is hard. So just know that, okay? This is hard. But I have to vote in favor of the taxpayers this evening because I want to save jobs.
Okay. Any other councilors? Council Winnie?
I haven't said anything about any of it. I, I came into this, I'm fully in support of 32B. It's not, as Representative Cybek said, it's not for everybody, and it's absolutely right. And I really, really, really take offense to people comparing Northampton to East Hampton. I am an employee in Northampton. I live under the Northampton rules and regulations. I have their medical insurance with my husband and my family. It's not the best, it's not the worst. the worst. It's, it is what it is. I have health issues just like everybody else, as does my family members. But I'm an elected official in the City of East Hampton, and I represent 16,000 people that live in this city. And 16,000 people that live in this city are really, really under the gun. I get calls from people that are non-city employees who work in the private sector, who are telling me they're one paycheck short of making their mortgage payment and they're going to lose their homes, or they're one paycheck short of putting food on the table for their family. And their company that they work for cut their insurance so that they're paying the $1,000 copays, and they're paying the $500 to go to a hospital. And they're not doing it. They're not taking their kids to the hospital. They're, they're trying to, going to free clinics, and that's with health insurance in Massachusetts. I don't have the fix. I don't think any of us in this room have the fix for what's going on. What Counsel Rist has said is absolutely true. Budget is not growing. We're not pulling money out of the air. The people, the 16,000 people in East Hampton, the, the people that are paying the taxes, paying your salaries, paying our salaries, paying for your health insurance, paying for all of that, they have to have a voice in this, too. And they're telling me that they don't think it's fair that they're paying 50% for their health insurance and others aren't, and, and yet they're, they're in the conundrum, too, where, you know, they realize that there's a fire, the police, the teachers, the city employees, the DPW employees that plow our roads, everybody from the top management, administration, all the way down to the bottom, which, as far as I'm concerned, none of our employees are at the bottom. All of our employees are wonderful, giving, good people. So, no, I'm not. I'm sorry. But you know what? I, I have to be accountable to a lot of people. That's how it is. That's why we're elected. We're elected to make the hard decisions. This is a debate, not on so much what the premiums are and so forth. To me, this is a debate about, are we gonna put a tool in the toolbox to have, that we can use should the bottom fall out of all of this? This debate's not gonna go away. We can, we can vote this down tonight, and we can come back with it in a year, but it's not gonna go away. Health insurance is gonna continually go up, and I'm not denying, and I'm not debating...
I'm gonna ask the audience this part of the meeting, if this is not a debate with the councilors, please.
That's right. I am not denying, and I am not gonna debate as to whether or not the cog is good. The cog is great. You guys, it's great. Everything that has been presented to us by the Insurance Advisory Committee, it's wonderful. They're doing a great job. Why would we want to get out of it? I, I don't see any reason. So you are thinking that, you know, I'm gonna vote against this or for this. You don't know what I'm gonna vote. Because up till tonight, I was gonna vote for it. But I also know that tonight's vote isn't gonna go away. We're gonna vote tonight, whichever the way the vote goes. But I will guarantee you that within a year to two years, we will be back here in the same place, having the same debate. And that's, that's, that's a given. That's just a given. So, thank you.
Counsel Hagan?
A lot of things were said by the employees very eloquently, and I'm not gonna rehash them all. Some of the highlights were that the, you know, the trust hasn't gone up in three years. They're not gonna go up this year, six years for retirees. I think I spoke before, I'm, this is a very serious thing when you take somebody's collective bargaining rights away. And I think the one thing that hasn't been said tonight, so I don't want to go back over all that, I think it was said, and certainly, I do not support it. But I think what we are forgetting a little is the, there were health care abuses in the state, and the state did set this up for a reason. And when they set that up for a reason, they also set up a benchmark. And that benchmark was the Tufts Navigator. And what they were saying, I believe, to cities and towns were, if you're fiscally responsible, you know, you have to be at least at the Navigator or below it. Well, the trust is a half a million dollars below the Navigator Plan. So to me, the employees have a good plan. They're happy with the plan. And to me, they've been responsible to the city in, in the past. I mean, they've, they've turned back a 5% contribution or agreed to a 5% contribution. Again, this plan hasn't gone up. I know my health insurance has gone up in those type of years. So again, I, I am very supportive of the employees and against this proposal.
Counsel Psychowski first.
Well, it seems like everybody's got their mind made up. Why don't we vote and get it over and done with, right? I make that as a motion.
Well, I'm actually not gonna accept a motion. I'd like to hear from the councilors. Counsel Derby, you would like to speak, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, this has actually been fairly frustrating for me on a couple of different levels. First of all, you know, I feel like I owe you all a debt with my, my life and my children and my family. So it's just hard for me to make this decision because it's really hard to hear people talking about their experiences, their personal experiences, which I appreciate you sharing, and, and talking about, well, we have a plan that gets us the best care. And it's frustrating for me because, you know, I know that if there, you know, I heard cuts being talked about, and if, maybe this is for me getting pink slipped every year of my first five years of teaching, you know, if I'd lost my job, then I wouldn't have had health insurance, and then I wouldn't get that care. And that's frustrating to me. And, you know, so I think that's a bigger issue, and I hope everybody pays attention to that bigger issue. Single payer healthcare would take care of a lot of that. So, you know, for me, it's frustrating just to, to be here and talking about this, because I feel like we should all have good health insurance. And, you know, I want to say a little bit about my experience, because I have been kicked around to different health insurance plans, being in Northampton. And, you know, last year, my daughter got really sick, and we were out of town in Ohio. And, you know, we had to go to a really expensive hospital, and I was covered, and I was really thankful for that. And that was even with me being kicked around, and I was on, you know, Health of England, which was good. So, you know, I think there is a lot of fear attached to it. But I really, you know, as I look at these savings that potentially in some maybe, we could, we could gain these savings, you know, I still think that those savings might not pan out, and why take the risk? And I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. And I, and I feel like another part of this that's frustrating me is if we don't make good decisions around this, then we're gonna lose people. And then what's gonna happen to those people? And that, that frustrates me. So this was, you know, confusing and complicated and difficult. But, you know, I feel like I don't want to be part of the equation of taking away workers' rights. And I know that we're gonna revisit this. And, and just to put a little perspective on this, my mother-in-law, who lives in Ohio, they just completely canceled their health insurance. And it, there was no talk about it. They just canceled it. And for every public employee, so, in, in the county she works in. So, you know, I feel like we're lucky that we have it here. But still, I know that we'll be back here. But right now, I don't think I can support this.
Okay. Counselor? I just wanted to let you know that I stand by my previous vote when we were on the committee, and that was, I was not in favor of this, and that's gonna be my position still. Okay. Now, that said, I have one brief comment, then we'll open this up for vote, I guess, since we've all spoken. And that comment is this, is that I see this as, this is a really big deal to me. This is a bread and butter issue, and this is, we are looking at dramatically, thinking about changing the way we negotiate our health insurance. I also would be hard pressed if there were substantial savings because of the taxpayers that I represent to actually not go this, this route. I haven't seen those substantial savings. The, my story is this, I have had that problem with a rapid and sudden increase in a deductible. And I know what that did to my family. What that did to my family, what preventative care went out the window for a while until I could adjust. There was no blood work. There was no dental cleaning. There was none of that because we couldn't afford it. And then when I adjusted, what happened? The money I put in my HSA account so I could afford these issues came out of less gas at the local mobile, less lunches at the local diner. Came right out of the economy because I had to put it somewhere. So there is an impact, and that impact is not just the employees of East Hampton. It's their families, and we have to kind of remember that. This is a really big deal. And so that said, if there's any, no more further discussion, I'll take a vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote. All those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Question.
Okay. Dan Hagan?
No.
Oglevitz?
No.
Dan Rist?
Yes.
Joy Winnie?
No.
Nathan Ziegler?
Yes.
Justin Cobb?
No.
Don Psychowski?
No.
Salem Derby?
No.
Move the public hearings to be closed. Have a second on that?
Yes, second.
Public hearing is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna take a five-minute recess to allow the counselor a little bit of a break.